It's an essential, valuable skill for our students to have another language. Barb went over the next generation, MCAS, but I just wanted to do a shout out to our tech team. Amazing that they're able to be under the direction of Mr. Atac of the Raptor Technology to be out and about as our fourth graders and eighth graders are assessed and using a computer-based assessment and amazing where we were able to do the practice tests, find all the bugs, and then work towards making sure our students were able to access that assessment off time. And I wanted to bridge what Dr. Brown said about the science curriculum and it's, we could not have anticipated the collaboration, the collegiality between Pine Hill and Shippering over this past year. I wanted to shout out to Jackie Daly for her support and Jen Ryan, who were here at Pine Hill and Kathy Cabarinie and Deb Rodman at Shippering. And to thank you personally from me that you supported those science materials. The teachers spoke about museum of science kits, elementary's engineering and plant engineering types of kits, bird habitats in the work they do at Rodman War, states of matter, adaptive animals in motion. A high level of inquiry and understanding of the science standards from those educators and their heartfelt gratitude for having that time across both schools will hopefully continue that next year. So that's, the $12,000, $2,000 of grade level will be very well spent.
I've got a question about the educator surveys.
Yes.
Whoops. Do we ever get the student surveys of the educators? Would we ever get to see any of the results? I know we, it seemed like last year we asked for the actual survey and we got to see the questions, but how is that, is that being incorporated or is that just sort of in a trial phase?
So the way that the surveys were part of the educator evaluation system and they're part of the end of the year conversation with the evaluator. So those results are shared there, they're shared at the school level. This is the first year that we are doing that. This is all in lieu for a lot of this.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, I can't say what our next steps will be. I'll defer to the interim superintendent, but I think here that the educators are commenting, but it gives them an opportunity to reflect on teaching and learning. And we could see trends across the schools.
Does it?
Across the schools.
I guess I should know this, but is it something that has to be done, has to be included?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But how it's incorporated into the overall is not defined yet well upon care?
I think.
Or has to be considered?
Right. It's not, it's not defined although there's, in the standards, there is an opportunity for the evaluator and the teacher to have a conversation at the end of the year, once the evaluator has a chance to look at the results. And if there's, if there's information in there that the evaluator believes should be helpful to the evaluation process, they'll have that discussion and we're going to talk about that data. That data is part of the confidential evaluation materials. But, but I think everyone, I think you're also aware that, that staff also fill out a survey for administrators in the building. So administrators get that feedback. This is the first year that, that we have the individual data.
Correct.
That administrators can review and the superintendent has access to that. So it's a similar process that a building principal who's evaluating a teacher has the opportunity to review specific data. The superintendent in meeting with principals and in this case, principal has the opportunity to do that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
In terms of the superintendent's report, so over the last 20 years, I've worked consistently on presenting information trying to be brief and not go on too long. So we're continuing to work on that. Let's see how we do tonight. There are two items, the enrollment report and assistant superintendent search update. You've seen the enrollment report many times before. The one thing I'll highlight is that at this time, this year versus the same time last year, our rate of growth for the year has slowed pretty considerably. And that's good news for us. We've, we've increased our enrollment by eight. As of May 1st, last year enrollment had grown by 12 students. So our, my analysis when I look at the one year projection, the one year rate for projections for next year, I think we're on target. Well, we're on track. We'll know better certainly in September how we did with that. But the one thing to remember as you look at these numbers, and I try to emphasize this all the time, the growth that we see this year, so the growth of eight students, that number is already embedded in the projection numbers. Because the way that the formula works, the projected numbers for the next year account for all of the in-migration into the district as well as the out migration. So students coming in and students leaving between, technically between October 1st and the following September 30th. So that, that's how the formula for the projections work. So, so we projected that we'll have more students next year to the tune of approximately, you know, 420 versus 404 that we had on October 1st. So that's, you know, 16 more students. So based on our projection and the growth that share eight students, we're 50% towards meeting our projected number. The individual grade levels, those numbers, maybe some of them will be right on target, but those will vary. And depending on what happens between now and September, you know, we may exceed the projected number. We may come up a little short. But, you know, I think we're still, we're still in good shape. We certainly, even with the projections, are well within our class size guidelines policy. So I think that's good news.
So the kindergarten 61, so I guess what I'm asking is you're comfortable with 52? Because that, so that 61 started this year was a bit of a little mini bubble?
Yeah. So remember, the projection for kindergarten is based on, is based on past five-year history.
Oh, okay.
The number of students who were on the census, on the town census, that were kindergarten eligible as of last December versus, and we look back versus, we take that number of kids that we knew were K-eligible that were on the census and compare that to the actual registration. And then we do a five-year look back and develop, you know, a ratio, an average.
Okay.
What that may be. We haven't talked about the latest kindergarten numbers. As of March 1st, we're projecting 52 weren't quite there yet, but I think we're, we're well on our way to getting there.
I think that's an excellent projection. We have 45 students signed, sealed, and delivered. I'm aware of one family that is on the fence about sending or holding. And many years we pick up about five between now and the start of school. The current enrollment in kindergarten rate for 63, according to the census and what we know now, this current kindergarten class was, was an atypical.
So just out of curiosity, so if it is 52 and that's 17, 17 and 18, three sections, that you still anticipate needing a, a system in each, in each class?
It's the model we've committed to in kindergarten?
That's fine. I'll just.
And we'll do another update in June. In terms of the assistant superintendent search, you were all at the joint meeting last Friday. The three school committees did vote to appoint Elizabeth M. Ford as the new assistant superintendent. Beth actually is a Sherburne resident. We're excited about her coming on board. I anticipate that there'll be a broader message about this appointment that goes out to staff, parents, and the community at large within the next few days, once we finalize the contract. That's my report.
Thank you. All right. I have room five.
I have room five. Excellent information. So in your packet you have the status of appropriations for April 30th, as well as a quarterly report as of March 31st for your special revenue revolving funds. To touch upon the status of appropriations first, a couple of new items to note in salaries. Due to actually new enrollment at Pine Hill, we did hire an educational assistant to finish out the year. And that position is actually in your budget already unfilled. So it's, although it took money away, there was, we had one folder in there that didn't get filled. That it does, it did impact the projections because we had to take some of that money to cover the eight weeks.
But it's, it's a special ed.
Yes, yes, yes. In addition, we were sort of relooking, or not relooking, but cleaning up all of our grant funds. And you had some extra money in, not extra money, but unallocated money in your 240. So we did make that reclass to.
What is 240?
To special ed.
It's the federal special education grant that is an entitlement grant that all districts in the state.
Like how big, how big is that to start with?
Like 70, I think it was like 70,000. So we assign Fed educational assistance to that grant at the beginning of the year. We wait for the year to sort of go through. And then when we get to this point, we go in and we true up to see what we have remain and we put some more salary expenses to that. So we were able to move $4,400 worth of general fund special ed assistant expenses to the grant to finish off the year. So with that, your payroll variance right now is still positive at about $26,000. On the expenditure side, as we're getting closer to the end of the year, we looked, took a closer look at some of the expenditure accounts. And in addition to the previously projected utility savings of $15,000, we're also projecting we're going to have $15,000 of unspent monies in our Fed services and site services and $20,000 in the custodial services. This could.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, that in total then gives you about $50,000 on the expenditure side of a positive balance.
So custodial services is not the, custodians, it's more, it's the.
It's more the maintenance.
Contracts and things like that.
Yes.
So how does that, how, so what do you, how do you think about that in terms of out years? Because next year's already done, right?
Right. But you don't know, a lot of this is sitting in, so you budget every year for unknowns, for repairs and such. So we, you know, we had the bladder issue with the boilers. But other than that, it's been a pretty smooth year again. That $20,000 does take into account that we were going to cut off all expenses, expense of further expenditures in this fiscal year in order to be able to cover the out of district monies. There are some things that we really would do, that we would utilize that $20,000 for. So we defer, we are deferring some expenses right now so that we wouldn't have as much.
You don't mean, do you, is that to say that you're not doing some things in order to cover the state expenses?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So that's important to know, that, hey, we're cutting, we're cutting back.
Right.
In order to cover this as opposed to, you know what I mean?
Well, I think I tried, the opening sentence of my report says that we are, we felt, we felt some, there were some funds we could suspend or divert to next year in order to provide funds to cover.
Okay.
The out of district this year.
And that's the point for bringing it to your attention today through this report. And, and we'll, in just two minutes, we have something else to add to that. But the money that we're talking about in contributive services is, is money that's budgeted yearly in line item. It's, it's basically a, you know, extraordinary banking reserve account. And these are the funds that we access when we have emergencies, like the, the issue that we had earlier in the year with, with the boilers, if there's a roof leak, anything that is.
Okay.
Is unknown. But in these kind of situations, I would, I would say to you that although that's what we're reporting today, as we go into June and we have a much better idea of how we're going to end up the year, we may feel more comfortable that we have some of this money, that we would then move forward and take care of those items that we've been putting on forward. But I think at this point, it's important for us as a district to be more conservative because we just can't end a year in deficit.
Okay.
And even with the supplemental appropriation, which we very much appreciate, we still want to be very careful as we go into the last two months of the year. So.
Okay.
So that rolls you into your out of district. And so you do have an updated detailed report that I think is helpful to take a peek at as we walk through sort of the reconciliation ring.
Could you, I'm sorry to keep asking questions. Could you, like the summary down here, can you add, can you add this up?
Yes. No, I'm just going to walk you through that.
Okay.
Right. So if you look at your status of appropriation report and you see the total tuition that we're over budget right now, it's the 228,225. Does everyone see that? It's, and you're not looking at the transportation, just the tuition. So on your status of appropriation.
At the bottom right hand and right.
Right. So that's, that's what we're in a deficit for right now. If you go to the back page of the detailed out of district report that's in your packet, we're going to look at it a little differently. We're taking all the funding that we have to cover out of district. We're going to look at this table right now.
The bridge to that.
Yeah, bridge to that. And you see what we have in the operating budget. You see your circuit breaker at 100%, which is the 281,276.
So.
Well, I mean at full.
You, you, we've consolidated. So that's actually say at 100%.
Right. At, at 70%, right.
The total amount.
At 70%.
Which is 70%.
It's at 70% reimbursement versus 60% of the budget.
Right.
Yeah. Then we had a little bit of carryforward money sitting in our circuit breaker fund from last year of $15,999. And then you have the tuition that we are collecting from Dover for the non-resident, that's going into your non-resident revolving fund of the $38,000 there. So that gives us our total dollars that we have available to cover our expenditures. And then you have our expenditures of $1,001,000. So that shows that we have still a deficit of $138,420. So if you take that $138,420, we're saying that the town of Sherburne has appropriated an additional $70,000 that we can then use to offset the $138,000.
Where's the 70? That's back in the other report.
In the summer. The 70,000 is what the town, is what.
Right. It's not on this page.
The supplemental appropriation. No, no. So now, now you're taking, now you're going back to the 138. We use all the available funds that we have for out of district, but we're still short $138,000. With that, we're going to apply the 70,000 of the town's additional appropriation. And I just told you about $76,000 that I think we have in your operating budget. So you have $146,000 to go against the $138,000. So right now, you're covered.
So how do we normally think about the circuit breaker? That's, that's 100%. We budgeted 60. I mean, that's 70% reimbursement. We budgeted 60.
So if you look at your status of appropriations.
Let me just, just for a second. I confused you. Hundred, it's 100%.
Reimbursement.
Of what we expect is to get back.
Right. But we, we budgeted, we would have budgeted less than that.
Right. So you budgeted 245,926.
To be conservative.
Yeah. You hold some back.
So what that number represents is the 60% that.
I understand what it represents. I'm just trying to think about how I would, how I would normally see it, what we would do. Where would the, the other 30 something?
30, 38, yeah.
Go.
Typically, what we, you do at the end of the year, we pull expenses from the operating and we clear out the circuit breaker accounts. So that you end up with a zero balance in circuit breaker each year.
That's circuit breaker that we're getting back?
Yes, this year.
This year. That was budgeted prior year.
Yes.
And, and some of the confusion, Greg, some of the confusion.
I love it.
Some of the confusion is that certainly in the last number of years, your, what you, your out of district expenses have been less than what you have budgeted.
So we were, we were getting a benefit of rolling declining current more from the past.
Not only that, but in terms of the financial reporting.
Right.
We weren't projecting deficits. We weren't showing deficits. So you weren't really paying attention, or we weren't really reporting, certainly on a regular basis, a number that related to what the district was getting back in circuit.
I just have a hard, I just have difficulty with the, with the timing. Is this, this money, this 281, 276 is from last year?
It's reimbursement you're getting against your fiscal year.
Coming in this year.
Exactly.
Okay.
So it's not really dollar, the dollars float at a different.
Do we ever reconcile? So if this is monies to come in this year against last year, do we ever check what we actually got last year from the year before? Because we're, we're budgeting.
The, the special ed department submits actually a circuit breaker report that has all the expenses on it.
Yeah.
By student. And that's what the state uses to calculate what you're going to get in your quarterly KMS. So it's, it's not, you don't have to go back and reconcile.
Yeah. So let's, to maybe, to lessen the confusion a little bit, the funds, the circuit breaker funds are not monies from last year. We're getting the circuit breaker funds this year. 281,000 is coming in this year. It's FY17 revenue. The amount of circuit breaker funds that we're receiving is based on FY16 activity.
That's what I say. When I say last year, that's what I mean. Right.
So it doesn't, it doesn't match up year to year. But it.
Yeah.
And we could anticipate that next year might be a higher number, right?
Yes.
So, so the, because of our huge expenses.
Because you have more expenditures than this year.
Yeah. But it also depends on what the state decides to fund it. Or is it guaranteed yet?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it can, highest it can be a 75% typically. And we'll get a little, we actually probably will see a little bit more on our fourth quarter. That's when they true everything up. And you'll, you'll see a couple of extra thousand dollars to the Sherburne sort of trickle in.
Okay. And so going back to your summary, the 70,000 bucks is from the.
The supplemental appropriation of the town of Sherburne.
That's the fund that we had $100,000 in.
No, no, no. This is, they are.
This is free cash?
They, no, free cash, yeah.
Okay.
Sure it came from.
But what they did is they, they gave you an additional appropriation to your fiscal year 17 budget because you are running.
That's nice.
Say that.
Yeah. Well, wait till next year. Okay. I'm good.
So, so after having gone through all that, there's late breaking news, which is very good news.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, in your report, the last line, it talks about, in addition, we've applied the circuit breaker extraordinary relief, which is no value only made if it qualifies for additional hard year circuit breaker funds. So extraordinary relief is a part of the circuit breaker program. In each of the last four or five years, the state has set aside $5 million of the circuit breaker state budget for extraordinary relief. It's, it can be complicated, but very generally, districts can become eligible for receiving extraordinary relief if their expenditures exceed 125% of the previous year's costs. It's a lot more complicated than that, but just think of it that way. In February, districts have an opportunity to go through a process with DESI. It requires a lot of work. It requires a review of educational plans, a review of all of the financial transactions that occurred up to that point. And typically, what happens in most districts is you, you stop thinking about applying for extraordinary relief when you have had the kind of changes we've instituted. However, in the end, when you provide all the information to DESI through, through their process, you have an opportunity not just to focus on out of district cost, but to go back in and review in district cost. Because there are, there are opportunities to capture circuit breaker reimbursement for in district students when you add up the total cost of services. And it works similarly to, to the out of district tuition. So Chris and her team did a great job in going through that process. And we just learned yesterday afternoon from DESI that we can expect to receive a little more than $52,000. So we expect to receive that by mid-May. Once we've confirmed that we have actually received those monies, those will be factored into the June monthly financial report that we'll get to next year. And we'll have some more detail for you around the circuit breaker extraordinary relief.
Not to spoil the surprise, but if we get that, town gets back free cash? Or how does that, how does that?
Well, we'll, we'll still have to see how the year ends.
Right.
And we'll want to have some conversations, I think, with advisory about that. But it appears certainly that right now, just based on the reports that you just went through, even with the supplemental appropriation, we've got $8,000 to spare. That's, that's what the bottom line is. So it now looks like we've got an additional $52,000. Next circuit breaker monies have to be, obviously go to offset the special education costs. But, but again, we'll have a better sense of what the bottom line might be on June 30th and what will happen with those funds.
I've got, just curious of how it works. I know we want to try to keep this short. In that case, if you're, if you're cutting things, if you're foregoing maintenance or things like that to, to balance this and you get money from the town and then you, and then you, we get this, how does that process work? I mean, is that the conversation you have with advisors? Say, hey, listen, we've got 15 grand worth of maintenance that we, that we need to be doing?
Well, no. I, I, what I would, what I'm suggesting is that what happens now is, again, we'll go through the month, we'll, we'll continue to monitor. But I would not continue to defer anything that we've discovered this year that needs to be fixed or repaired that would have been repaired and we not had this deficit in special education. So I think it doesn't make sense to defer that. We're just, we're just now dipping into next year's operating budget. So, so my recommendation would be that we actually take care of those issues. And, you know, we now though are much more confident that at the end of the year, even doing that, there will be a surplus. And when there's a surplus like we do every year, that will be returned to the town.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe, maybe we'll get fortunate and that, you know, the, the end result of what you heard is that in the expenditures line in particular, right now there's about $141,000 balance. So when, when Dawn projects that we'll have about $70,000 from that, from that, well, 50.
76.
76. What that really means is if you go back and you look at this report, and you look at that in district number, which is 141, based on our projections right now, that number at the end of the year will sit at about $76,000. So, so that would have been needed along with the $70,000 supplemental appropriation to pay that 138.
Yep.
So, so we'll, again, like we do every year, we'll go through the process. My plan is to authorize now those repairs, so we'll spend that money from this year's budget, so we can not be behind going into next year. But it's likely, I mean, it looks like we'll have, there'll be funds returned back to the town. And, and I think there are some ideas we have that we'll want to engage the school committee and advisory in around those monies, you know. Just, for example, do we, do we keep some money that's in the tuition account that the committee set up, you know, that's that thirty-eight thousand dollars that we're getting from Dover? Do we, the plan now is you empty it out. Do we keep some money in there, just so that if something happens next year, you know, that's another source of revenue that we can have? So, you know, it's, we're not talking a lot of dollars, relative, but there's still some work to do, obviously, before we close up the, and discuss with that.
And not to confuse the diversity of payability, also including your packet was a report that we had put together earlier in April, beginning update and specification and such, just figured it out to you, but we did include it in the packet to, just so you could see it, that we didn't updated that report until...
So our goal was, was even if in a month where there was no meeting, and we were going to provide a monthly report, and Dawn had gone through that work, we had, as of, I think, April thirteenth, April tenth, she gave it to me, I was going to PDF it and send it out to all of you. And I think it was maybe Friday, said to Dawn, I don't think I ever sent that. So I apologize. So we did want to just make sure you had that in your packet, so, so you could, if you wanted to prepare, no issue with that.
And then just quickly on your revolving funds, just the new activity that we did actually receive the check for, the very generous large gift of ten thousand dollars, so that's recorded in your gift fund. And we are still seeing very favorable results in our food service activity, based on the increase in the rate that was approved by all school committees up here, in addition to, I think, participation of just a little bit. So that's nice that you're building a more healthy fund down in that arena. Any other questions?
No, thank you. All right, item six, report on school safety and security.
Thank you, Greg. There's a information here on school safety and security. It was, this information was requested by one of our members, so thank you for the opportunity to be able to provide this information. So in your packet, you have my memo, which I'm going to speak to in just a second. But we also provide you with a copy of the public schools of Dover, Sherburne, safety procedures. So this, this gives you an idea of, you know, all of the different pieces of school safety that is embedded district-wide, K-12 or pre-K-12. And this was a document that was updated four or five years ago, and has been reused since then. I'm not going to read through the report. You see some comments around current practice, there's some comments around training and updates. I think it would be better, I want to just say a few words about this, and then I think it would be better to just open it up, so if you have questions about those pieces, those pieces of information, it's probably better to have a discussion about it. I do want to just quickly go through some notes about what is currently happening. And then, part of the request was a question about a protocol, it's the safety protocol that many schools, especially over the last four years, are starting, have started to adopt called ALIS. And there's been a pretty significant amount of information that's been out, that's been circulating, a big part of the news, and if you pay attention to this kind of stuff. So I want to talk a little bit about what ALIS is. And so briefly, in terms of our current practices, the one thing that I didn't speak to in the content of the memo is related to security, our practice at the elementary schools, and to a large degree on the campus, at the regional campus, is that doors are locked at the beginning of the school day. So at eight-thirty-five here, once, once the vast majority of our students have arrived, because we rarely have the times, the doors are locked. And they remain locked during the school day. You're very familiar, we have a buzzer system with a camera located at the main entrance and at the gymnasium entrance. So, so anybody coming to the school has to be buzzed in through that, through that process. At dismissal time, the doors are unlocked, so that our students and staff can leave. There are cameras in addition to that, the buzzer system, where Janay at the front desk has a view of people who are, who are looking to be buzzed in. There are also additional exterior cameras that I think everyone's aware, which they were installed two or three years ago. And then, and then again, the doors are unlocked at dismissal time. In terms of interior safety and security and the protocols we use, there are basically three practices that are in place. There's the evacuation practice, evacuation drills, fire drills, they're one and the same, the evacuation procedure for leaving the building is the same as a fire drill. So if there was a need to evacuate the building for something other than a fire drill, the same procedures would be followed. Then there's a shelter in place. Now, in the booklet, it's identifying shelter in place slash lockdown. I'm not as familiar, frankly, with what our practice is in the district, but in previous districts, shelter in place is a little different, frankly, than a lockdown. Shelter in place is typically a procedure when, when all of the doors, all of the entry exits ways into a building for a period of time remain locked. No one is allowed into or allowed to leave the building during a shelter in place. So if a parent, if we were in a shelter in place for a particular situation, and a parent showed up to come in, they would not be allowed in the building. You know, if a vendor was arriving on site and needed to deliver something, they would not be allowed in the building until the shelter in place was, was over. In a shelter in place that I'm used to, there's no immediate threat inside the building, so students and staff can move from one room to another. They don't go to one place and remain there, and they remain there until there's no longer a need for shelter in place. One example of a shelter in place might be that there might have been criminal activity in the immediate area that public safety was involved in, and there, in that case, maybe there were perpetrators that were, have been eluding police. Police might have thought they were in the general area of the school and notified us, and that is a situation where we might do a shelter in place. So no immediate danger inside the building, but there might be issues on the exterior of the building, you know, perpetrators maybe trying to cut through the property, and, you know, that, that might be an example, again, of a shelter in place.
What would happen is kids were on the playground.
Yeah, so we, there would be a procedure that the staff supervising the kids would get them into the building right away, and then once everybody was in the building, the shelter in place would go.
So they're not, like, hiding under their desk, they're, the doors are just locked and nobody comes in around?
Everyone's accounted for, but the routines continue and are controlled.
Right.
A few years ago, we had some state police and local police involvement when there was a robbery in the neighborhood.
That's a very typical...
So we brought our recess, our students in, we were all contained and accounted for, learning went on.
Right. A lockdown is typically associated when there is the possibility or the actuality that there's an intruder in the building, someone we don't know. So a lockdown drill, a lockdown would be called, staff had been trained. As I indicated, our practice is that there's a minimum of one lockdown drill a year practice, so students would, would know what to do. But under the lockdown procedure that we have, everyone in the building is designated to go into a classroom, so kids in room two nineteen, the teacher would bring them into two nineteen, or make sure they're all in two nineteen. Classroom doors would be locked, so all interior doors are locked. If it's safe to pull the blinds or shades down, teachers know to do that, or adults know to do that, students need to be accounted for, so they have that information, they have in their GOAT packs, they have their rosters. So if there was a substitute or someone else, another adult who happened to be in the room, that information is there. The instruction is that the adult, the teacher, is asked to group the students, move them away from the door, away from the windows, out of sight of any possible intruders that might be able to look into the classroom to see if anyone's in there, and to just stay in that position until the all-clear is given. So those are the basic procedures. ALIS, which we talked about, ALIS, which is, is an acronym for basically five actions, if you will. The A in ALIS stands for alert, the L stands for lockdown, the I stands for inform, the C stands for counter, and the E stands for evacuate. And the ALIS protocol, which was really developed by a law enforcement official in Texas, back shortly after the Sandy Hook incident, a veteran law enforcement agent who had been doing this kind of work for a long time, as well as, and thinking about the Sandy Hook situation, but also thinking about the incident that occurred at Virginia Tech University, if you're familiar with that situation. He developed this, this, this program, which he called ALIS, that many schools have been incorporated into their safety and security protocols, as it most importantly relates to the lockdown part of it. And basically, what, what the, what the procedure that, that protocol we follow is, if, especially if there's an armed intruder in the building, our staff are taught and trained that once you're in the classroom in a lockdown, be quiet, try to be as silent as possible, so if there's an armed intruder, they don't know you're in the classroom, they try to get in, the door's locked. The thought is that typically, they won't break the door down, if they don't think anybody's in there, they'll just move on to the next classroom. And, and we, we basically are telling our staff and our students to stay quiet, stay in a group, out of earshot, out of, out of visual sight. What, what this program, the ALIS program emphasizes and supports is that, not only do you follow the lockdown procedure, get into a classroom, but in addition to locking your door, you do whatever you can to barricade the door. Move desks, move bookcases, whatever you can to barricade the doorway, in case an intruder tries to get in there, tries to shoot their way in, for whatever reason, tries to get in the room. What the alert piece means is, staff are encouraged to let other staff know if the intruder is in that part of the building. So call the office and say, "Intruder outside room two eighteen." Better yet, use the intercom when doing that. So the intruder hears that they've been spotted, they're in the area of room two eighteen, and the thinking is that they don't want to be caught, so they'll leave that area. So the alert piece is, don't be quiet, keep yourself barricaded, but let the teacher next door know, you know, the, the intruder's outside the classroom. And I'm giving you very simple and general, general pieces here. L is the lockdown, and the difference, again, barriers, barricade yourself. Inform is that other piece, let the officials know if you can, call the office, use your cellphone, let them know if you, if you know where the intruder is. Counter is a very, my experience is that it's a much more controversial part of this program. Counter means that if, for some reason, an intruder gets in your classroom after you've taken all these other steps, don't, how do I say this? Counter means you have a better chance of survival if you fight back, disrupting the person, throwing things at them, and trying to overtake them. So you have, and this is where it gets, this is where, again, it gets a little controversial. But, but the message is, if an armed intruder comes in your classroom, and there's a group of you just in the corner, doing nothing, odds are that a lot of serious damage is done. And if you counter, the thought is that there'll be fewer injuries or even deaths. And then the evacuate, the E, is, this concept gives teachers or the adults who are responsible for those students more flexibility, gives them the opportunity to make a decision. If, given the circumstances, all the information they have, they believe that there's an opportunity to escape, to evacuate that classroom, and get out of the building and away from the intruders, then they have the ability through the protocol to make that decision and get students out of harm's way. That is, again, another kind of difficult concept, having a teacher or adult make that decision. Requires, you know, requires a lot of training by people who have been trained in this philosophy in this protocol. So that's, in a nutshell, what ALIS is. That's, it's different than what we practice now, and I think it's something that the district needs to think about going forward. In terms of training, again, I mentioned in my memo what we do around that. Just recently, over the last couple of months, DESI conducted a all-hazards emergency training workshop that they, but they did it by areas of the state. They invited school districts to send teams to this training, and also to invite law enforcement, their law enforcement partners. So we did send each of our two assistant principals, Jackie DeBryneman from Chicagorin, assistant headmaster of the middle school, Brian Mearinger, and assistant headmaster of high school, Ian Keegan, all attended this training. Dover, the regional school resource officer, Officer Graber, who's with the Dover PD, attended with them. And in conversations I had with Chief Thompson, it appeared that they were sending a team as well. It was a little bit of a, we were, we were talking about training, but as it turns out, it was a different training. So, so we didn't have Sherburne PD at this training, but they were at a different training. And the reason that the assistant principals and headmasters went to this training is that the, the plan is, moving forward, after four or five years... that the plan is moving forward, after four or five years, it's time for us to reassess where we're at in terms of our school safety and security protocols. The training that Jackie attended was more geared to the multi-hazard training, and there are requirements under the law for every school to have a multi-hazard evacuation plan, which we are not quite there, but we're there. It requires an annual meeting between the superintendent, the local fire department chief, fire chief, and the local police chief. We've had those meetings, I have had those meetings the last two summers with the Sherburne and Dover officials together, and we've acknowledged that there needs to be more work done. So the goal is that this summer, that our core group, with assistance from public safety officials from both communities, will meet to discuss the process of going forward and to start the process of reviewing our protocols, what's changed in the last four or five years, what other procedures are out there that weren't really, that weren't out there five years ago. So ALIS is one of them. I know that Sherburne PD has already done some training around ALIS and are interested in bringing that to the schools. So I see this as a, certainly, the beginning of a process to review all of our safety and security protocols, bring them up to date. It will be an opportunity at the regional level to talk more about the unique circumstances that we have at that campus, given that students share facilities and do travel in between facilities. So this notion of having all doors locked, certainly, that's important to know in that environment. So we need to look at that. And I've talked to Andrew about this, and so I know he supports that. So as we go through the next two months, we will kind of fine-tune what the mission of that group will be, create a charge for that group, and then that group will meet over the summer and start to plan, you know, what the timeline is. If we make changes, the most important part of moving forward is to have a very inclusive and comprehensive training program. We did introduce ALIS in the Winchester schools the last two years I was there, and it took us two years to fully implement it. But we held training sessions for parents. Students were trained, staff were trained. There was a public meeting that we hosted, and we invited members of the public committee to learn about it. And I know that it's been implemented there successfully. I think that ALIS is, needs discussion in our districts. I think that there are a number of schools that have implemented all of ALIS. There are some schools that have implemented procs of it. And I think that's really a decision that has to be made, you know, by the communities based on, you know, the, based on individual community circumstances and culture and how people feel. So in a nutshell, that's sort of important.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? You mentioned, or your remarks, I came to mind. Substitute teachers, how do we assure that they're trained in the procedures for each building, especially here at the elementary level, in a class substituting kindergartners, first graders?
Yeah.
I don't know how large the pool is, what's the procedure to make sure that those substitute folks are...
Yeah. So I think that's a great question. First, our pool is very, very, very small. It is not vast, and we struggle in defining substitutes. But Barbara, is that something you can address at Pine Hill level?
Yes.
Not the vast pool, but what we do.
The vast pool I would like to address. The substitutes are, plans are reviewed with substitutes. Every classroom has the GO pack, and we always make sure substitutes know their name, colleagues, in the event that assistance is needed. Substitutes are also required to be trained in our EpiPen and bloodboard pathogen training requirements and signed off by the school nurse on those. So those are protocols that are visited annually with substitutes.
Okay, so they can receive that training in advance of the day out type things, they're signed off on these different items?
Training's a generous word. There's a general review and certainly room for improvement. And teachers leave comprehensive subplans with resources around emergency procedures, but also specific medical needs within each classroom. So that there's, you know, liability and more importantly, procedural kinds of things for medical and more behavioral needs of students.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if in the GO packs, are there medications like EpiPens, inhalers, things that, no?
Those, if it's a quick evacuate, you browse a bag and... The school nurse has a separate TO-GO pack. They're written when we evacuate, we're spread over the 10 acres of Pine Hill School.
Right.
But the school nurse has a medical kit that is always at the GO ready. And the school secretaries have a different GO kit with more comprehensive family contacts and more comprehensive information.
So their family contacts are not in the GO kit either? Like little index cards?
No, no, those would be with the school secretaries.
Class list.
The class list for, you know, the quick accountability of the office staff would, you know, if they came to reunify families, students with guardians and parents, that that's a whole procedure through the front office staff.
Do they practice that? The secretarial staff, do they practice that procedure?
In lockdowns, we practice the general calls of our informing the superintendent's office, the police department, et cetera, the calls that those folks would make. Reunification would look very differently depending on a scenario. So we haven't literally evacuated to our secondary emergency sites and practiced that.
I would say as a district, we're doing the basics. I think that a lot has changed over the last five years, and there's more we could do. And one of the resources that, that we'll provide the working group this summer, I think it's one of the best resources that has come out in the last five years, and it's the Massachusetts Task Force Report on School Safety and Security that was released in July 2014. A very comprehensive document. There was a task force that was created by then-Governor Patrick, had members from educational, from schools, from public safety, and a very comprehensive group. The report is really, it's formatted in a way that provides a guideline for school districts, you know, to follow, and I think is, you know, it's one of the most comprehensive and complete reports that I've seen. So it's an excellent resource that I think will provide our districts with a lot of assistance.
Any other questions?
It might be something to consider to have. I'm just, I'm thinking back to, in Seattle, when I was teaching, we had GO packs, and we had class lists, but we had parent contact information as well. It's, I can imagine trying to release 400 kids through two people at the end of a crisis would...
Well, we would have multiple runners and all that.
Yeah.
We also need to be careful to keep that controlled.
Yeah.
So that we're accountable. We went through reunification down at the firehouse a few years ago with our 14th and fifth graders versus our number of grade level students that were up here, but had that lockdown scenario. So you have multiple people involved, but you, you know, you want a gate, you want a barrier so that it's very, it's very controlled. Not time-consuming and disorganized, but very, you know, very controlled. A small piece of emergency planning, I wanted to mention that we're required by law and we do conduct bus evacuation drills a minimum of annually. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
No, thanks, Barbara.
I do have one more question. Oh, sorry.
No, actually, it's great. It's been a good topic, so, yeah.
Just touching on this, but I had this question earlier. I feel like a few years ago, information went out to parents, remember this, on what to do if they're, on the parent protocol side of it, if there was some kind of a lockdown or giving us instructions for what to do instead of everybody come screaming up to the school, which, when I was teaching third grade in Seattle, we had a pretty big earthquake, and we had practiced everything, practiced, practiced. And then when something happens, you know, everybody was okay, but it would be good to maybe revisit that, or?
No, I think that's a very good point. That would be part of the protocol.
Yeah.
Certainly for, no way. So let me just, no, that's good. And I think that'd be part, certainly part of the review. And again, also part of the training piece I talked, the training piece I talked about.
Yeah, okay.
And that certainly would be, would be important because you can picture our location here if we needed emergency vehicles to get here, but they couldn't get here because we had 300 parents knowing a parent because they wanted to get here and get their kids, which, you know, it should be a natural reaction. But having, giving parents guidance about that, I think is very important.
Thank you. And thanks to Jennifer for bringing it up. It's been, it was a good, very good topic. As well. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. I guess I have a question on the, again, probably thanks to the Mudge Memorial Fund for the 10 grand. It says the cafeteria AD project. Is that...
That's what it is. It's the, we're putting a speaker system and rear projection in the auditorium.
Well, okay, that's what I was...
It's a cafeteria at Chicaring.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Cafeteria, oh, yeah, the sheet.
Exactly.
Oh, okay. I thought it was like, oh, you get like TVs and...
We don't need TV.
A lunchroom. Yeah, exactly, okay.
We might be asking you for sound, Barry.
So again, thanks to the Mudge Memorial Fund. So I'd be looking, I guess, for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some...
A second.
Second.
Any questions or discussions? Any corrections to minutes? Nope, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Okay, passes. And then communications, for your reading pleasure, item eight. And that does it. So I need to poll to leave regular session and go into executive session, not to return.
Right.
Okay. Poll.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay. Thank you all. We're adjourned to regular session.